Morning, it's eight thirty and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for July ninth, two thousand twenty-four to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Next is citizens be heard. Do we have any citizens who want to discuss something that's not on the agenda? We have anybody remote? Steve?
Mr. Chair, I actually literally just received a concern right now. I think I had Justin here earlier. Someone was mowing the ditch along one hundred and twentieth Avenue South, just west of Seventieth Street, within the past twenty-four hours. They turned around in the ditch on the north part of our property and left a rut almost a foot deep. We own heavy equipment. We don't, we own no heavy equipment to fix this. I don't know if the county mowed the ditch yesterday, but I need it to get fixed. And so that was from A-L-I-N-E-M-C-D-O-N-O-U-G-H in South of Saban.
Well, we can assure that citizen will have it looked at anyway. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. And we'll move on to approval payments of bills and vouchers.
I'll move to your approval.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes from June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Move to approval.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. A motion second, any discussion or any changes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Brings us to budget presentations. And first up today, we're going to have three of them. First up is our recorder, Kimberly Savagel. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners.
All yours.
I'm here today to present to you my two thousand twenty-five budget. I should have a copy of it in front of you. I'll start by going through some of my revenue items. I am keeping my general service charges the same. My first decline will be on that. The second item are my general service charges. This is for my online revenue. We are seeing a decline in our documents since COVID, so there is less usage of that program. So I have projected that I'm going to have a little less revenue next year for that program. Next is my equipment fund, that ninety-five thousand, that's just an in and out. And the next one is that compliance fund. Earlier this year, that hundred and five thousand dollars was approved by you to use for various land record items. And then underneath my interest revenue, I do have a slight decrease there. We had a change in how we're doing our deposits for our cash and check. So part of my money is not going into my bank account anymore to earn that interest, but it is going into the auditor's office bank account. So that will be, that interest revenue will be on their budget. Any questions on the revenue portion before I move on?
Questions for Kimberly. Proceed.
Okay. Under expenses, those first few items where there's increases, that is all just employee salary and costs for health insurance. Everything else has kind of stayed the same until you get down to my travel and expenses. I did increase that. I am seeing an increased cost for the hotel expenses when I do attend conference, so I upped that to make sure that I have enough for two thousand twenty-five. Everything else has stayed the same, except for down at the bottom, that last line computer software, there is a decrease there. That is the subscription cost for my online services, so I'm expecting less revenue. So I'm expecting less expenses to go with that as well. Any questions on any of the expense items?
Commissioner Campbell.
Kim, so the hundred and five thousand that you have, that, and that gets dispersed to, is that coming in and then it gets dispersed out, doesn't it, to?
Yeah, so it comes into my budget as a revenue. It actually goes out as a line item in those different departments where the expense is.
Okay. Okay, so that hundred and five thousand in expenditure, matching expenditures, is in the department that receives the money?
Correct.
Not yours?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? As usual, thorough and it's a, it's a well-planned and documented operation you've got out there. Think it reflects in the confidence we're here. We're not, not hearing any doubts here from the, from the Commission. So I appreciate your time, Kim.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Matt Jacobson, Director of Planning and Zoning, with his budget presentation. Morning, Matt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Here today to present my two thousand twenty-five budget. Can start with revenues as well. Every year that I've been here, we've exceeded our, our revenues and I expect that to, to continue into two thousand twenty-five. One thing that we've also continued to receive is the riparian aid as well from the state for the buffers. Any questions on either of those? Okay, going to our expenses. Just looking at a couple of, of changes, looking at the per diems, just upping that by about five hundred dollars just to account for any special meetings. We've had a lot more special meetings with our development code update. We had a lot with our comprehensive plan as well. Also mailing, just with postage, we're, we're doing a lot more violation work and so that requires a lot more certified mail to go out. So just accounting for that. Probably the most notable change would be for other professional services. I've talked with our county attorney's office about budgeting for some outside legal consultation. Could be used in a couple ways, just to go over our kind of procedures for, for permitting, for hearings, making sure that that is all kind of, we're using all the, the best practices and within, within the law there. That would also, could account for a training for our Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission as well. And we've also had some kind of challenge, some more challenging permitting or rezoning or text amendment issues that have come up and thought that it would be beneficial maybe to have the, the, some outside representation firm that specializes in zoning and land use, just to consult with. And so if we were to go with that route, the, the budgeted amount there would probably give us like eight to nine hours of, of legal work for that. And then the miscellaneous line item is used solely for management of our county-owned properties, specifically the flood bio properties. We've actually started mowing in Crestwood this year and looking to maybe do some more, I don't think we've done that before, and we're looking to do some more mowing and maintenance work on some of those bio properties as well, just especially in Crestwood where there are other residents as well, and just kind of maintaining those properties. I think it's really important as well because they're just highly visible too. And with that, I'll yield for any questions.
Questions for Matt. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe just to speak to the violation component, I think it's important for the rest of the board to real, understand and remember that, that part of expanding your department was to make sure that we had adequate opportunity and staff time allowed to follow up on the conditions on permits. And so maybe not necessarily that there's an exorbitant amount of violations that are happening more so than in the past, but we're just making sure that we're following through and doing due diligence on those components.
Any other questions or comments? Anything additional, Matt?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, thank you. Good presentation.
I feel like we should always, like, Justin always times it right. Play like, da-da-da.
Dramatic entrance. And next up, we have Justin Sormer, County Engineer, with his budget presentation. Morning, Justin.
Good morning. And just to address that mowing concern, I will have somebody go take a look at it right away.
Okay.
And yes, good morning. So my budget is comprised of four sections. I will hit on the highlights of the four sections and if you have any questions, feel free to ask at any time. So the first one is three-ten, which is maintenance. On the revenue side, we did, we have to estimate using past year's trends and kind of projections that we've seen from the state, because this is state aid allotment, maintenance, maintenance revenue, and then also our town. Our miscellaneous townships and cities is the five-year rolling maintenance contract. On the expenditure side, first item you will see is a new request. This is for one additional maintenance worker. So I currently budget forty-seven thousand, five hundred in part-time mowing and summer help and intend to get rid of this. Where our current staffing level is, I don't feel as though it's necessary making this a twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-dollar new request. And the intent of the request is to make our road form and position not be a snowplow route. So during a snow event, our maintenance supervisors taking calls and residents' concerns as well as I. It's impossible to cover the whole county in a reasonable manner, so this would allow us to split the county in halves and be much more responsive and attentive to calls that come in. Also allows us to be more flexible if somebody wants to take a vacation day or if somebody's sick, just having additional people to cover that. Ten-three-ten, thirty-one-oh-seven, I did keep overtime flat, even though that number is quite a bit lower at this time, obviously with the winter that we had. Ten-three-ten, sixty-two-seventy-seven, so training, I did put that up as we're going to have quite a few retirements this year. So if we get a new employee that doesn't have a CDL, this is where their training comes out of. So to date, four employees have taken that course and it's been a really, really good thing for our department. I think it's worked really well. Ten-three-ten, sixty-four-fifty-four is down being, it's not a non-boot year. In the union contract, they do get boots every two years. Ten-three-ten, sixty-five-oh-two, road materials. So I did increase that by a hundred and fifty thousand to try to account for the rising cost in gravel and to be able to crush material in our twenty-six pit to have on hand. In the past couple of years, we've only gotten really one competitive gravel bid, so we also need to have some material on hand in case we do not get a good bid. Ten-three-ten, sixty-five-oh-nine, traffic supplies. I did put that up, five thousand. Posts and signs costs are going up, just trying to make improvements where we can. Ten-three-ten, sixty-five-six-six, roadway maintenance costs, so we do have our aging road infrastructure and I up this hundred thousand to make repairs where we can. Ten-three-ten, sixty-five-six-seven, weed and brush control, I upped it by three thousand. Annually, we work with SWCD to spray road ditches and just trying to capture as many miles as we can. And then ten-three-ten, sixty-six-thirty-one, so this one you'll see is up from four hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand. So I am proposing to use the money from the Moorhead Fortieth Avenue turnback payment, which the last one is in two thousand twenty-five, receivable in two thousand twenty-four. So I'm proposing to put that four hundred thousand dollars into a seal coat and striping program. Federal Highway does have some new striping requirements and I feel as though in a lot of places throughout the county, we are falling behind in striping and seal coating. So this four hundred thousand would be dedicated to seal coating and striping each year. And when I do my five-year plan presentation later this month or in August, you'll see that reflected there. And then ten-three-ten, sixty-eight-oh-seven are the turnbacks within the city of Moorhead, Moorhead Street allotment, town road, gravel tax. And like I had mentioned, it was last year, the Moorhead Fortieth Avenue turnback, so you do see a pretty big decrease there. Any questions on the maintenance side?
Questions for Justin. Proceed.
Move to three-twenty, which is construction. So the first one, ten-three-twenty, fifty-two-twenty, state grant, so that is one point four one six million. So that is the City of Holly Local Road Improvement Grant that they received and intend on constructing in two thousand twenty-five. Bridge bonding, ten-three-twenty, fifty-two-seventy-one, so this is the estimated amount of bond funds for projects that we do or anticipate to have funding for. Ten-three-twenty, fifty-two-seventy-two, municipal construction, which is down slightly just because the Eleventh Street underpass was this year and that was a big payment, added municipal side. And then ten-three-twenty, fifty-three-twenty, federal, so we do have two federal aid projects next year, one being a bridge west of Glendon and one being a diamond grand project. On the expenditure side, ten-three-twenty, sixty-two-seventy-four, which is the engineering consultant, I did up that for this year to, to account for the roundabout design that we're currently underway in. Ten-three-twenty, sixty-two-seventy-seven, training, stayed, stayed flat. A lot of the research that our technicians take now are virtual, but I am going to have an engineering, a new engineering technician that I assume will need to take some of the courses next year. Ten-three-twenty, sixty-five-six-five, right-of-way costs are up to account for the right-of-way in CASA twelve and fifty-two that we anticipate that we're going to need. And then all the construction costs on the bottom are in and out with the revenue side. Any questions on the construction side?
Any questions? Proceed.
Next is three-thirty, which is admin. So highway admin covers our office manager, admin assistant, engineer, assistant engineer, and highway accountant. Ten-three-thirty, sixty-two-seventy-one, other professionals, so this, this covers our cost accounting software, RT Vision, and any other software that we have. Ten-three-thirty, sixty-four-oh-one, small, small office equipment is up slightly to try to capture costs. Otherwise, for the most part, this three-thirty is relatively flat. Is there any questions on the admin side?
No questions.
And then three-forty is shop. So the revenue that you see on the top is from joint facility expenses. Ten-three-forty, sixty-one-oh-seven, overtime, so I kept that flat, just trying to capture the trends. Obviously, same with the maintenance side, that number looks really good this year because our winter was very, very light. Ten-three-forty, sixty-three-oh-two, equipment repair and maintenance, up to try to capture actual costs. Recently experienced quite a few really expensive breakdowns, parts are expensive. And another big thing that comes out of this is cutting edges, so on a bad winter, we go through a lot of them. And then ten-three-forty, sixty-four-ten, fuel, we went down seventy thousand, just trying to capture actual costs. Prices seem to have leveled out a little bit this year, which is good, and obviously with the winter. And then radio equipment's up a thousand dollars just to cover the rising costs of radios. We purchased two new ones a year, trying to get a radio in every piece of equipment. And that covers the shop side. Does anybody have any questions with my budget overall?
Any questions? None? Mr. Campbell.
Going back to your highway construction, and you talked about, you know, you explained about the revenue, the grants. And so do you try to, do you try to put the grants, are the grants put in the year that the project is going to be done or is, for example, if you get a grant, what if you got a grant today and the project isn't done until two thousand twenty-five? Where, is the revenue?
So it's based off my five-year plan, so I'm trying to do it in the actual year. So like, the local road improvement one, for example, that one point four million, they received it a month ago and they know that they're going to construct it to twenty-five, so I'm putting it in twenty-five.
Revenue in two thousand twenty-five as well?
Yep.
Okay, even though you've technically received it already?
They've received their funding letter. We haven't actually received the funds until I request. I can't request funds like that until it's actually been spent.
Okay.
So bridge bonding's the same way. I can only request as much as we paid the contractor.
Okay. But sometimes there's a carryover.
Lot of times there is a carryover because on a lot of these mill and overlay projects or any sort of construction project, you're rarely closing it in the same year that, because if you're waiting for seeding or, because until I come to board, we don't release retainage, so there's that five percent that's still hanging out there. And if we don't receive it by the end of February, then it's receivable in the following year, I believe is how that works.
Thank you.
So if, I just have followed.
Commissioner Campbell.
How do we show that, that receivable on, on this part then?
How do I show there's?
In other words, that, that future money, how is that?
So there.
The best way I'm trying to say it is, how do we know what the offset is going to be?
So both the revenue, so on this particular one, the revenue and the expenditure are matching. So the revenue on three-twenty matches all of the different construction ones down below. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it would. Okay, thank you.
For the purpose of your budget, you try to, you try to show them all within the same year?
Correct.
But any overages you've been approved, or any future funding you've been approved for actually has not been received, it simply has potential to be received. So if you're going to spend it in twenty-six, but that would be factored into your five-year plan, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
And even so, the state aid allotment, I'm projecting what I show in my five-year plan, and if that ends up being more, the revenue and the expenditure do go up.
Okay.
And, and does, and does Lori try to, does Lori try to make year-end entries after the fact that tie those together?
I'm saying.
That would be an anti-question.
Yeah, we do, we do make year-end entries to account for that, but with the grants, if we had a portion of the grant that wasn't received in, in like twenty-five, what we're budgeting for.
Yeah.
It would go into, we would also have an expense and a revenue in twenty-six, since we can only request from the grant what we've paid the contractor. So if we had expense in twenty-six, we would also have revenue in twenty-six to offset that.
Okay, so the revenue follows the expense?
Correct.
In the year the expense is incurred?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that kind of.
Right, that's right, it's London too.
So, so if a project is three-quarters done and you receive three-quarters of the expenditures, you're going to get three-quarters of the revenue?
Correct.
Okay.
But we know what to anticipate because we've gotten a letter identifying the funds are there, although we haven't received them yet.
Well, we, we ultimately know what the grant is and we ultimately know what the bid project was.
Correct.
And that's, that's how it's all based on, the bid project and the grant usually was not always matched. Sometimes the grant can be more than the.
So I get an encumbrance letter, so after I open bids. So I first get my first funding letter, which is based on my engineer's estimate, and then once I open bids like I did last week, I send those bids to state aid, then I get an actual letter stating what the actual grant is based on bid.
There's never, there's never a shortfall or there's never an overage. The eventual funds authorized are what matches the bid.
Correct.
The overage on the five-year plan can be as if there was local money that was tied to the project that ultimately didn't, wasn't needed because the bid, you know, there was no local money needed to match.
Correct.
Are we getting any motor graders this year or next year or?
I'd love to get some, but. One thing I didn't hit on was internal service, so that is one point five million. We're trying to up it as much as we can. I'd love to say, yes, we are getting motor graders, but we're not quite there yet and working on it.
I didn't notice.
As I've mentioned before, they've gone up two hundred grand in a matter of four to five years.
And that's where we had the conversation, you know, we had, a number of years ago, we had switched to replacing, changing those out every seven years because it made financial sense to do it with warranty and all the other issues that came on, but, but, you know, that's going to have to be relooked at.
Yeah.
You know, and we're talking about a piece of equipment that's two hundred thousand dollars more, certainly those graders have a much longer life than seven years.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're looking at right now. So on the one motor grader, we're actually over on ours, so we're out of warranty. So we're about a hundred grand apart between what we have in internal service and trade versus what they're charging. So it's something that I'm looking at pretty closely to see what kind of expenses we have as far as repairs go.
You got it, yeah. All, all of those things have to be looked at together.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments for Justin? Or, and?
I don't want to get off topic, but it might help me. So last night at the watershed meeting, they talked, so let's go back to the ditch fifty, what we talked about last week.
Yep.
We had that bid at, what, six hundred and seventy thousand or something like that?
Sure.
But then, now in the watershed then, they, they're coming in, going to be responsible for, it sounded like around two hundred and twenty-five thousand?
So.
So how does?
That's a whole different situation. That's treated similar to town bridge, so the one that they're responsible for does not qualify as a bridge, so in Mindout's eyes, since it's smaller, so it just made sense to bid out that box culvert with the other two, just to get competitive pricing.
Okay. And then they're just paying for that one?
Yeah, correct.
Gotcha, okay.
So there's no grant, no grant funds on that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Justin? Justin, and thank you for coming in. Good report.
Thank you.
And we will move on to committee reports.
Thank you.
And we'll start with Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, I attended, was invited to attend the meeting in Rollog with the Rollog Senior Group. I was invited by Joe Peterson, had good conversations with them on their, our new facility builds and lots of good feedback on how positive the change at DMV was when we moved to Moorhead Center Mall, and they are certainly excited and hopeful about the same level of service that will be provided at our new facility opening this fall. And then there was an update from DHS licensing on nursing home facilities, so that was a great meeting to connect with folks. I, because of that, was, did miss the construction committee meeting for the withdrawal management facility. I called in right at the very end, but then was able to attend the DMV construction committee meeting. We did have some discussion on signage and wayfinding. They were able to finish up the parking lot, I believe, yesterday, working on some brick lane. And then we did have a discussion on signage and then the proposal of a possible purchase of a mower for the site out there. I don't want to call it a campus, but between the three facilities seems to make sense to have a mower up there for staff to utilize. And then last night, I attended the city council meeting in Barnesville, did have good updates from the council there, and an update on the Senate happenings, legislative update from Senator Rob Kupchak. We continued to discuss about how important it is in regards to joint collaboration for capital investment projects and letting each other know what legislative priorities are between all of our entities so that we can maximize the leverage in our discussions at the Capitol. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Last Tuesday, after our board meeting, we did, Commissioner Gross and I, along with Steve, the part of our building committee, we did a tour of the non-secure unit, detention unit, along with Steve from Solutions and James and Josh, and we went through that entire facility to get, gather from, from Solutions if they felt that that would be a solution or for a. if they felt that that would be a solution, or for a PRTF. And there seemed to be quite a bit of excitement. And Steve, I think, indicated there, from his standpoint, there'd be very little change needed. Of course, that would depend both on DHS and public health, because that's one of those that's permitted by both, right, Steve? So, but I think the process is in place to contact those agencies, to have them come and give a look-through of that facility, to make sure that there would be no major changes that would have to be required for that in the event that that was to work. And I just spoke with Kathy McKay for a minute this morning about the public health side of it, and she's going to kind of get more involved with the understanding of how the public health is part of the licensing process, to help work with the state public health department. Yesterday, we had the withdrawal management and detox facility meeting, construction meeting. That's going quite well. I mean, we're really starting to talk about things moving in pretty soon. So it's getting very, very close. The major concern, if there were to be one, would be the delivery of the generator. Because that facility, of course, being a 20-to-4-hour facility, cannot open without a generator. And I believe, they said that that generator is anticipated to be delivered in mid-August. And there might be a week or two timeframe, once it's delivered, to have that properly installed and inspected. And if all goes well, you know, we're looking at... And I think there's an awful lot of... I think they're going to be given the approval to move a lot of things in there, in terms of office furniture and that type of stuff, in early August. So that's just right around the corner. And then, there's the discussions about media day and some tours going on for the public, and more Business Association and that type of thing have requested some things. We've received a transitional plan, a thorough transition plan done by Joe Olson in terms of how that process will work. We basically have to, you know, get that place ready and be open, and shut the other one down all at the same time. So there's a three-page deal of issues that have to be looked at, so they've done a nice job there. We had some discussions about the required signage on... interior signage on doors and those types of things, and what color, and that's been determined there. We did have some proposals for outdoor signage. And we agree with these that are done. We're going to add one more. And then, also, the ones that are along 15th Avenue North, they originally had those as a 36 by 36 sign, or three feet by three feet. And we encouraged them to maybe size that up to four by four, just because of the nature of the width of the 15th Avenue, being able to be seen from either going east or west. Let's see if there's anything else. I think that covers the detox. Then, we had the motor vehicle construction meeting right after that. On that one, there was a... There was an issue regarding spray foam required to connect the beam and the roof decking. And then, there was also another issue, and that one is... That one, we've already talked about, and that's going to be an add-on of like $5,775. And then, there was another issue that, in the process, the drywall bid, they... I can't remember, Steve, what did they call the... What was missing from...
It was a flashing on the facade.
Yeah, yeah. So the drywall people thought it was going to be in the ceiling contractor's bid, and the ceiling contractor thought it was going to be in the drywall bid. And so, in essence, it was not included in either bid. And that ended up being somewhere, it's estimated to be like around $22,000. I thought maybe, Dan said they might have that number by today. But anyway, so Gertz worked with them, and the ceiling contractor has agreed to cover half of that. And then, they said, basically, the owner would be responsible for the other half. And if you don't know who the owner is, I'll let you know it's the county. So, but in essence, you know, had it been put in there like it was supposed to, the county would be paying it anyway. So it's just a matter of now, it's got to come out of our contingency. And so, that was approved by both... Commissioner Mojo and I gave the preliminary approval of that, so that can move forward, and that'll come as an official change order request coming forward. On the timeframe there, that continues to go well. As Commissioner Mojo mentioned, the driveway approach now for the DMV was completed yesterday morning. And I drove by there later in the day, and they were already doing some saw cutting. So that's really looking good. I mean, it's just all that, that whole project just seems to be going on time. They're already also talking about... I think it's very likely that, right now, based, you know, barring any uncertain things that are going to go on, we're probably looking at being in there in November 1 is the date we're looking at now for the DMV. And it's... A lot of it has to do with... There's an awful lot of stuff that has to occur yet in October that makes it unlikely that we'd get... I mean, it could be earlier, but as it stands right now, we're probably looking at November 1. And I think early on, we were talking about September, October timeframe in the original discussion, so... But that's still well ahead of where we had been, had we not gone with that fall construction. We would probably not be looking at till after the first of the year into next year, so... I think that, Mr. Chair, I think that concludes my... And we also did get the same transition plan from Joe on that process, too. And that basically is going to be a weekend move, where, once they shut down on Friday, everything is moved over, and they'll be opening up Monday morning. I think one of the biggest issues right now is dealing with the state and the setting up of the cameras, because we can move them, but they have to install them. And so, it's kind of a... That's got to be a coordination deal that goes on there, so... But all of that is, it seems to be, and, you know, hats off to Joe Olson and all the work that he's doing in making all these transition plans, because, you know, when you look at all of the detail in there, there's an awful lot of components that have to be done, and he's done a really good job. But I couldn't find anything that he missed. I always try to find something. Anyway, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
I had no meetings this... Official meetings this week, but I did go ask Commissioner Campbell. Said we had a tour of the Juvenile Center. And I gotta say, I was impressed with the work of Josh and James over there. I mean, we come to our meetings every week, and sometimes we don't realize how well they run their part in the county. And I was just impressed with the tour and what they do over there for the county. And last night, I went to the Markham Township picnic. They had a very good turnout. They had about over 60 people there, and good food, good fellowship and stuff like that. Esther was there, too, and thanking for being there. It was just a good turnout there for us. Glad for the sheriff was there, Justin was there, and a lot of the... I don't know, about four or five deputies were there, too. It was good turnout. And I think they're starting construction on their new township hall, and probably this week or next week. So they're excited about that. That was my...
Thank you. Mr. Kravonov?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I had one meeting, and that was last night, at the Buffalo Red Watershed District monthly meeting. Meeting started out with Brett Arnie, who was a... Geez, Paul.
Bowser.
Yeah, well, Bowser, but anyway. Brett Arnie presented for the Board in Water, Soil and Resources, and brought legislative updates to the Board. In 1955, the water law was put into existence by the state, and really hasn't had a lot of updates. So he just brought... Made awareness to the Board, the district, what some of the changes were. And most of it was just updating language, the way present uses and positions are. Also, identifying engineering authorities to match up with state as it's being done on the one watershed, one plan. And then, I have not seen the language, but just for of interest of the Board here, there's clarification now on how to remove a manager. So obviously, it was a little ambiguous last time, it sounded like. And now, there's strict details, so I don't know if you want to look at that. And that was probably the main thing I got of that. The other thing, just to let you know, on our project, the district project going on down by Barnesville on Whiskey Creek, so that ditch 34, that restoration of that, and then also the other tributary that it's hitting, a channel restoration near Country Classic Cabinet Shop there on County Road 21, I believe. Anyway, that, the AAW has now been completed on that, and that'll be under review, and then away they'll go on getting that work done. That was the main gist of everything. And then, there was updates in their employee handbook, much as we're having to do it here with the addition of sick and paid leave. That's my report.
Thank you. And I had no meetings last week, being the Fourth of July week. It was a slow one. But Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, participated in the non-secure detention tour that's been addressed. I also met with Sheriff Amdeen in regards to hiring process with the retirements. Happy to report that there are conditional offers out on all positions, and he hopes to be fully staffed here by August. Research recovery facility has been discussed. We've had some challenges with the garage doors, the high-speed garage doors for the last couple of years. We had another meeting this past week with representatives from construction engineers, and also Burns and McDonald on a path forward. There is a representative from the door manufacturer that's going to be on-site this week, and hopefully, we'll have a solution. If not, we've talked about moving forward and needing to have doors that are operating that we don't have to worry about are going to randomly go up in the middle of the night or in the winter. And so, we're working on a process that... Corey's done a tremendous job of keeping this forward, but it's gotten to the point where at two years, it's gone on too long. So we're going to continue to hope to have a solution this week, and if not, move forward with some other ideas. On the 8th, I met... Also, met with Karen Lauer and Derek LaPointe. As you recall, this Board formed an EDC committee that you are a part of, that we are going to have quarterly meetings. And we kind of talked about, a little bit about that involvement, what that looks like, who we would like to potentially see there. And I think the message that came out was, is we really wanted to have, at least to start with, the members of that have EDC as a Board, URR, EDC from the county, Barnesville, Dilworth, Holly, each have their own individual economic development group. And so, the recommendation that came out of that discussion yesterday was to establish a date here in late August, early September, to have a meeting. I know that we're meeting with the HRA in late August already, but look for a date there, and then to essentially get that group's input on how to best move forward, really to try to impact. We have, you know, the idea was, is we have Greater Foregrom, Morehead, EDC. We have West Central that deals with things both regionally and across the river and in Minnesota. And I know that this Board has had a goal of making sure that there's a focus specifically on Clay County, and I think that's one of the things that we addressed. Let's see, on the 8th, we had the... Yesterday, excuse me. Yesterday, we had the withdrawal management and the DMV open owners' meetings, which have been addressed. Again, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, Joe's done a tremendous job of putting together transition plans, so nothing gets left out from licensing and to move forward. I think the other great thing that as a Board you guys did is you allowed for these projects to purchase, purchase all of the items early and put them in storage, saving us tens of thousands of dollars, and has us prepared to move everything in when they're allowing us to. After that meeting, I met with Ryan Weber for a period of time, just to kind of talk about that pre-designed contract for non-secure detention that the Board asked me to bring forward to you here in the coming weeks. And so, there, Ryan's going to work with Scott to hopefully have something in front of you in the near future. I think part of the challenges that we've talked about through that is, again, having a facility that looks softer than what we have. But I think that is also going to be important, is the legislature this year said that in 2025, 10-year-olds, 13-year-olds can no longer be held in detention. And so, that's going to be a pretty important need moving forward, once that happens, because even prior to me leaving the Juvenile Center, it wasn't uncommon to have, you know, four to five kids in that facility. I think James said during our meeting that it was... That's about 5% to 6% of their kids are in that age range. So making sure that we're meeting the needs. As you've heard through with James and Josh, just in the last few years of... The type of youth that they've been asking to serve, have been asked to serve, has changed dramatically. And so, to try to capture that.
Can I just ask, so the 10- to 13-year-olds can no longer be...
In detention.
Whether it's secure or non-secure?
It can be held in non-secure, but not in the detention portion. So kids, I'll just use the example I used a lot. At one point, we had a kid in for second-degree assault, arson, burglary. Those three kids would have... Are currently in detention. And 2025, they'll have to be placed in a non-secure...
My... I guess where I'm going with this is that if they had been in our secure in the past, and our secure is our 11-member county deal, and our non-secure is not.
Correct.
Non-secure is just Clay County.
Yeah.
So these 10- to 13-year-olds from other counties, if they can't go into our facility, where are they going to go?
Right. That's going to be a concern throughout the state of Minnesota.
So, but I mean, that could be a significant issue.
Yes.
And if we're going to incorporate the ability to handle our kids, Clay County kids in that range, in a new non-secure facility, what kind of a... We might want to check in to see what kind of numbers do we average by our other members?
Yeah. I think that's a... I mean, I think it's a good issue for... I think you guys have a, maybe a board meeting, advisory board meeting this week? Is it this week?
I hope it's not this week, because I'll be in... It's next week.
Yeah, next week. And so, that might be...
In the next couple of weeks.
I think that would... This topic is an important one for them, and maybe they're aware of it as an advisory board. But it certainly would be something, I think, that if not, we should put on their radar.
Oh, that's why I asked the question, because I'll certainly, you know, between... We'll have to raise that issue.
Let's see. As kind of was mentioned earlier, Josh and James have worked with the Department of Corrections. The facility was built with sight and sound separation, so... So if, if we were to receive funding, the board would move forward with moving a PRTF there. The Department of Corrections has already said that it meets their requirements of the sight and sound separation. So then last night, I met with Quinn Jaeger on a series of just social, social services issues and some onboarding questions that he had. I did yesterday receive information, all of the, all of the budget, budget information has been compiled for the first time from, from Lori. And we'll probably provide an update next week on where, where we came in. Generally, we kind of come in that 10 to 13% increase. And then this board provides a directive of where we, where we're at. Just to be clear, you know, it does include, it will include the, the 9% proposed car contract increase for insurance. It will have steps and also a 3% COLA. It'll also have the staffing for the new detox facility, but it will not, will not have anything with the market study to this point. And so just, just a note, I think that this commission has been, with the market study, has been concerned where that's going to come in. And so we've had discussions all year from our staff standpoint of making sure that they are going through their budgets, fine-tuning combs, and also trying to limit the new requests. And so I think that you're going to see in, in this year's requests from our commission, or from our departments, that it's much, much lower than what we've seen in previous years, and really, really only the, the real hard needs that, that they have. So we'll have that update next week. Also, just as Darren mentioned last week, we will have a, a updated, update from the David Drowson Associates on, on the market study. So, and then just lastly, just a reminder, this week is the Clay County Fair, July 11th through the 14th. And we will have, we'll be at the fair on July 12th from noon to four for Government Day. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Stephen. Just a point, we have the West Central Regional Juvenile Meeting on the 12th, no, 16th, I'm sorry. And if you could just let James know on that 10 to 13-year-old, that's probably, should be on the agenda.
Okay, will do.
I think it's the 18th, Thursday.
Yes, Thursday, the 18th. Glasses, my next prescription's come with a leash. Okay. Michael, anything?
Mr. Maltin was unexpectedly out of the office this morning. He sends his regards, but no updates. Thank you.
Darren? Jackie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to piggyback off of Steve, Friday will be County Government Day. We'll have various departments and booths out there and some pens and goodies to give out. So come on out and visit.
Be there. Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn.